So tonight, we're going to give you information about fostering. My name's Cheryl Barnard and I'm the portfolio holder for children and young people. And so I'd just like to say thank you for joining into this call and to hand over to Clive to give you some more information.
Thank you, councillor Barnard. Now, I'm going to start by admitting to what councillor Barnard pointed out to those of us who were in the meeting before we started, which is that I'm not the world's most technically adept person. So I'm going to apologise in advance for any mishaps there are during my little brief session. I did suggest to John that I had a face better suited to radio transmission. And I also said that if I didn't have my face, I could try and pretend that I was Charlie out of Charlie's Angels. But he seemed to think that both of those ideas were unacceptable. So my name's Clive Chambers and I'm the head of service for children in care in Nottingham City Council. And I have the great good fortune in that context to be responsible for a range of services. And those services include our fostering service. And I know that the services that we provide, all the services we provide as a city council, fostering is one of the most important things. We work really, really hard in Nottingham to keep families together. And we know that we're really good at keeping families together because all of the comparable statistics that we have tell us that we're doing better on that from than most other authorities with similar levels of need. But there are going to, there are always going to be some young people who can't safely remain in their family. And for those young people, fostering is just the best option by such a large, by a lot such a large way. And we are in particular need of recruiting foster carers at this point in time. I know that there's a great deal of attention on various kinds of care in the national media. And one of the things that saddens me is I don't think there's been enough recognition of the fantastic foster carers do. Our foster care are looking after children in challenging circumstances and doing a great job of supporting them through this really difficult period of time. But we're always going to need foster carers and we're always looking to recruit more. And I see firsthand the fantastic benefit that foster carers bring to children in care. But I guess what I would say is that I've seen fostering come from kind of lots of different perspectives. I've got a kind of long, or my family has got a long and varied association with a care system, starting right back with my grandad, who was brought up in care. And then when I was a child, my mum was a foster carer. My sister was a foster carer for the city. And if things go to plan, to the extent that I have a career plan, what I want to end my job, I want to end my life where it's been a foster care. Because I've seen, and as I say, the benefits that foster carers bring to the children that we work with. And I've, I know that I have benefited from my experiences as a person living, growing up in a family that fostered. So really, the majority of the rest of the evening is going to be delivered by people kind of real experts in the field. There are a number of foster carers and fostering workers on the line. So my job is just to say a massive thank you to all of you for giving up your time and for thinking about whether you want to be foster carers for the city council. We really, really genuinely appreciate the fact that you're willing to think about undertaking this role. And we really hope that as many of you as possible will go on to become foster carers for the city council. Thank you very much. And I'm going to hand back to John.
Thank you very much, Clive. I will just share the screen again, so people can see what we're talking about. My name's John Cooper and I work in the fostering recruitment team here at city council. And we'll be going through a presentation here. So we'll do the introductions, we've got some experts on fostering here with us tonight. If you've got any questions at all, please email them to this email address here, fostering@nottinghamcity.gov.uk. And then at the end of the presentation, I'll access that inbox and then I can put some questions to the experts. And then hopefully by the end of the presentation, you'll decide that you want to take the next step, which is to request an initial home visit. If you visit our fostering website and go to the get in touch page, you'll see there, the get in touch page. If you scroll down there, there's a tick box for book a virtual home visit. Please book that, give us your contact details and then one of us will get in touch and we can book a visit via Zoom or whatever method we need to book a visit with you. So we'll start with the introductions. Gemma, would you like to introduce yourself first?
Yeah, I'm Gemma, I'm a foster care for Nottingham city and I've been fostering for two years now.
Thank you. Miriam, do you want to tell us a little bit about yourself?
Yeah, hi, my name is Miriam. I'm a supervising social worker in the fostering team. I've been working as a supporting social worker for foster carers for about five years now.
Great, thank you. Rachel, can you tell us a bit about yourself?
My name's Rachel, I've been a foster carer since 2012. And we have a young man, he is now, that's been with us for seven years. So yeah, he's been with us for a long time.
Thank you. And Cheryl, do you want to, obviously you introduced yourself as the councillor portfolio holder, do you want to tell us a bit about your fostering career as well?
Yeah, I've been fostering for just over two years now. And I've currently got a mother and baby placement. Prior to that, I had a young man who was a refugee from Afghanistan. We had him for eight months.
Brilliant, thank you. Okay, so we shall crack on and start with the basics. So what is foster care? Very basically, when the child is looked after by someone other than their own family. We do a lot to keep families together, but sometimes we have to take children into care. And for the vast majority of them, the best option for them is to go into foster care. It's there to help children thrive, reach their potential within a safe and secure home environment. They won't have come from a safe and secure environment, which is why they need to be fostered. And we'll, we'll hear about, a little bit more about that later on. It's challenging, but also incredibly rewarding, as some of the foster carers will describe in a bit. The first thing to sort of get your head around is the different types of fostering. There's lots of different types. The main thing you need to sort of bear in mind is the difference between short term and long term. Some people think short term fostering would be for a day or a week or a month or something like that. But it can run on for longer than that. In some cases, up to a couple of years would technically still be called short term fostering. The reason for that is when a child comes into care, there's, they will always be in short term fostering because a plan hasn't been made for the future yet. The courts will decide a plan usually. And sometimes a plan might be rehabilitation back with the family. Sometimes it might be an adoption plan. Sometimes it might be for the child to go and live with extended family, such as grandparents. Or sometimes the best plan might be for the long term futures to be in fostering until they reach adulthood, in which case that would then turn into a long term fostering placement. Like I say, the courts make the decisions in a lot of cases, which is why the short term placement can run on and be for, like I say, a year or two. Adoption bridging is a type of short term fostering and that is where a carer will look after a child who has an adoption plan and prepare them for moving on to live with their adoptive family. Respite fostering is where we have carers who will, on an arranged basis, look after children, looked after children of other foster carers, say like one weekend a month, a week here, there and school holidays and that sort of thing. Parent and child fostering is where a foster carer will look after, it's not always, but usually, a young mother. And they'll either be pregnant or they'll have perhaps newborn, with the idea of looking after them together to keep them together, give them the best chance of staying together. Cheryl, do you want to just tell us a little bit about your experience of parent and child fostering and what that's involved for you?
Yes, we didn't know about parent and child fostering initially and it, we decided to do it because we've got a large spare room that's big enough to take a cot. And possibly, you know, occasionally it could be both parents. So it's a double bed and we thought, well, why not? Why not try and help give some role model and some guidance to some parents or a parent to enable them to look after the child and to prevent that child coming into care. So our current placement, we took in September 2018. Again, it was supposed to be short term, three to six months. And the baby was two days old. We went to see them in hospital to see if, you know, if she was happy to come and stay with us and if we were happy to take her. And the baby's now 19 months old. Obviously, we've gone into lockdown now, so there's no chance of them moving out just yet. But due to a couple of complications, they've been longer with us than a lot of mother and baby placements would be. But it's given us a chance to give that child a good start and give that mother guidance in order for her to be a good parent. So she's, she'd not had a very good childhood herself. She didn't know how to cook, how to clean. She'd never really been nurtured as a child herself. So we've been leading by example, showing her how to, you know, do things. And she's turned, turning into a really good mother to that baby and she's getting all the skills that she needs. She's learning to cook, she's picking up recipes. So it's, it's been really rewarding to see her blossom into a really good mother. And to know that, you know, this every chance that she will succeed when she's rehoused.
Brilliant, thank you for that. Just go back to the screen again. Emergency fostering is typically done by experienced carers who will go on a rotor for like a 24 hour period. So that when we get an emergency placement in, and it's usually in small hours, often with police involvement, or if we get a call from QMC basically saying, there's a child here, for whatever reason, there's no adults look after them for a period of time. We will then call whoever's on the emergency list and say, there's a child here, can you take them? And usually it's for sort of 24 hours, 48 hours, but we'll find out in a little bit from Gemma, that it can sometimes run on beyond that. We also have 16 plus fostering, which is where, that's the last sort of step you get for moving, when a child's moving on through into independence. And that for me is one of the most important types of fostering. It's, it's where you get a chance to, as Cheryl was saying about the young person she's looking after, you teach them cooking, cleaning, budgeting, all these things. They're in the, in the wide world on their own, they've got a chance of making it. And that's really, really important type of fostering. It suits a lot of people who perhaps work full time, because the, the young people tend to be fairly independent, they're not needing to be taken to school and that sort of thing. So if you, if you are working, that possibly is a potential type of fostering that might fit your life. And then we also have short breaks fostering, which is for children with disabilities. If you have any skills in that area or it's something that you're interested in, that might be a type of fostering that's suitable for you. So let us know that. Gemma, do you want to just tell us a little bit about the types of fostering you've done from that list?
Yeah, so we started off actually with an emergency placement of two little ones who arrived from the QMC via police around 1am. At the time, they were two or three. It was a bank holiday weekend and we had a phone call from the manager saying, please, 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 can you help us? Just until Tuesday. And we said, yeah, not a problem, we'll give it a go. And two years on, those children are still with us and we're now bridging them for adoption, which is really rewarding. We've, we've come a long way. So yeah, we've done a bit of emergency, short term and bridging. And also we did some respite. And we're hoping to long term foster the people that we have living with us currently until he can move on into adulthood. So so far, quite a bit, no parent and child yet and no short breaks or 16 plus. But I'm sure there's many years for us to do some of that.
Brilliant, thank you. Rachel, do you want to tell us a bit about the types of fostering that you've done?
Yeah, so we've, we've done respite foster care. We've done emergency. That was an hour before the child came, we got a phone call saying, this young girl can't go home, she needs to, can she come to you? And we said, yeah, sure, what time? And they're like, now. Okay. So that's like, when it's an emergency, really is, it couldn't be as quick as that. And then the long term placement with the young man that we have now, he, like I said, he came to us when he was 10 and a half. We got a phone call to say this, the placement had broken down unfortunately for where we lived before. And we met him on the Wednesday and he came, he moved in on the Friday and he's been with us ever since. So he's definitely long term. John, I know you're going to talk a bit about when they leave foster care and I can talk about what happens then because our young man isn't going anywhere, he's staying with us and just something else that happens when they're, when they're 18 plus.
Yeah, that's the, what's known as staying put. Up until a few years ago, when they looked after a young person, approached their 18th birthday, they would basically sort of have to fend for themselves almost. And an average 18 year old these days is not going to be able to do that very well. So now luckily, we're able to pay the allowances up to the age of that young person turning 21. Or if they're in higher education, it can go on beyond that. But that difference between 18 and 21 is huge in terms of maturity and being able to sort of fend for themselves out in the wide world. So your, so when your young person turns 18, which is coming up quite soon, isn't it? He's going to be on the staying put so that he can continue to live with you. You can teach him more skills up to the age of when he's 21.
Absolutely, yeah.
Brilliant, thank you for that. Miriam, do you just want to talk a little bit about your role as a fostering social worker, a supervising social worker and how you support carers like Gemma and Rachel and Cheryl?
Yeah, yeah, of course, yeah. It's really nice to hear actually Gemma and Rachel talking about their experience because it really links into what I do sort of day to day. And so my role as a supporting social worker for foster carers is to provide that day to day support throughout the fostering career, really. So the main, the main support that we do is via doing a visit. And we do a visit every four weeks to every foster, every foster care home. And also we're on the phone five days a week. We can get contacted via the phone when there's any issues or when any good things happening too. When, if we're not around, we've got a duty system in place. So we've got a duty social worker who's on the end of the phone every day of the week, really. And at the weekends, there's an out of hours support team. So for ourselves, we're a team of about 12 social workers. And like I said, our role is to support all the foster carers who are approved for Nottingham City Council. In terms of the support, like I said, it's visits is via phone. When we do visits, we have, we have an agenda that follow, that we follow and we focus on the child that's in placement. A lot of the times, the children come with a level of, of need that we need to look at. And we support foster carers in understanding the children. And sometimes it may be talking about things like how to use a rewards chart or thinking about different techniques that we can use to support children develop and achieve their best in, in the placement that they're in. And it's, it's things like, sometimes foster carers are expected to attend meetings and reviews for their child. So we provide support in meetings for the foster carers. And we write reports when that's, that's a need to show how the foster carers are doing and how they, they're meeting the needs for the child. And then supporting in transitions. So if a child will leave the placement, they might either go to adoption or they might go back to their birth family. So we provide the support when that transition happens. And, and it's, it's really, for us, I think it's really rewarding to see how all the children progress from maybe the start of a placement and then they, they go on to, to develop and they grow in that placement. And depending off the type of fostering, but it's, it's really nice to see, even if it's a short term foster placement, you can see the change in children sometimes quite soon when they go into a loving family from, from the family they come from. And it's just really rewarding to see. And yeah, I'm really, really enjoying what I'm doing. But yeah, I think, I think in a nutshell, my role, as well as all my colleagues, is to support foster carers in what they do day to day, day in, day out.
Brilliant, thank you for that, Miriam.
Yep.
Okay, we'll move on to next screen. So why do children need to be fostered? We've touched on it already. They may have suffered neglect and or abuse. They've all experienced some form of separation and loss. If nothing else, have been separated from the birth family, which obviously is a huge thing for, for a child from, from any background. And they just need somewhere safe, stable nurturing, loving until we know what their future holds. That could be decided quite quickly or it could, as in the case of the children Gemma is looking after, could be a couple of years' time. Okay, so what's involved in fostering? The first thing, if you're thinking of looking after children in school age, your school runs, it's really important that you or someone in your, in your family or your support network is able to get children to and from school on time. A lot of children who come into care have had really sporadic school attendance. They might have been getting to school late, waiting around to get picked up after school, might have missed a lot of school. And it's really important that somebody's there to take them to school so they get there on time, somebody's there to collect them from school on time. Schools are massively important, consistent thing in a child's life, particularly when they come into care. So if you are thinking of looking after children of school age, please bear that in mind that you, you know, you, either you or someone in your family or your support network is going to be able to do those school runs. Family contact, that is where children will have regular contact with birth family. Do you want to tell us a little bit about that, Gemma? The, the first time that you took a child to contact and what that was like?
Yeah, so the first time I ever did contact with the children in our care was really scary. And I wasn't really ready for it. I didn't know what it was all about and I popped the children in the car and drove. We don't, we don't live in the city, so we drove quite a long way. And I was quite worried about what birth family were going to think of me. And yeah, it was, it was an anxious time. But actually, birth family were fantastic, really grateful. We've gone on to have a really good relationship. We've kept contact books and the contact centres are great. There's people there to support you, the contact workers support you. But yeah, I think it's important to remember, it is a really difficult time for birth families and for the kids in our care. One of our youngsters really struggled with contact and became quite ill. And would be sick sometimes on the way with anxiety. So it's a tough time for everybody, but, but it can be really rewarding and it's, it's nothing to be worried about. Lots of people to support you, supporting social worker, contact workers. So yeah, it was something I wasn't prepared for, but actually it's something that's been really rewarding in caring for the kids that we look after.
Thanks for that. In terms of sort of the handover for contact, have you ever felt like threatened by birth family or anything like that?
No, never. No, I think birth family are angry normally with social workers, not with foster carers. So normally, they've been great, no problems at all. I was concerned at the beginning, you know, you're driving there, you're leaving your car in the car park, are they going to follow you? But we've never had any problems at all.
Yeah, I just want to sort of reiterate the thing about feeling threatened and stuff. Where there's any risk to foster carers from, from any birth family, the contacts are always facilitated by social workers and contact workers. So there's absolutely no risk to the foster carers at all. They're, it's done in, like I said, contact centres, neutral place. Sometimes the child's social worker will come and pick the child up and transport them and then transport them back as well, if there is a risk. But it is very, very rare that there's any kind of antagonism or anything like that, any threat to, to foster carers from birth families. As Gemma said, you often get little gifts and a lot of, a lot of gratitude from birth family because they're really grateful that you're looking after their children for them. Meetings, Miriam touched a little bit on that. Rachel, do you want to tell us about the sort of meetings that you have with, around looking after the young man that you're looking after?
Sure, so when, our young man's at college now, but when he was at school, we used to have two PEP meetings a year, that's personal education plan. And we used to have two of those every year at school. The parent never came to those and that was just their choice not to attend and that was fine. And then you have two looked after children or children in care reviews and they're usually done at Isabella Street. And it's everyone that's involved in our young person's life, sits in a room and we just talk about how the placement's going, how he's getting on, how, how he's progressing or if he's not, why not? And it's just a big team meeting. So we have two PEP reviews, two lack reviews. And then it's just the general appointments like opticians, dentist, any medical appointments, things like that. That you just log all, you just keep a big log of everything that you, like a diary almost, of the, what you do with, with your child. But they're, it's a crucial piece of evidence because my memory's not great. So if the doctor said, you know, they say to me, when did he have his opticians? Without this log, I wouldn't, I wouldn't know. So yeah, it's, it's, it's always good just to log everything. So it's the PEP meetings, the lack meetings, the appointment, medical appointments. And then his social worker comes and sees him every six weeks. But she's literally on the end of the phone. So if I need her, I can just ring her anytime, which I have done. Sometimes I've rang her at the weekend, that's just because I forgot what date it was. But she always answers the call, always. She reminds me it's a weekend, but you know, she always answers the call. So yeah, I think that's about it really in terms of, and if they're under a paediatrician, then there's paediatrician appointments. But yeah, the, the meetings are just the lack meetings and the PEP meetings. Going back to contact, I've never done contact with our young man. He always, earlier, when I used to have volunteer drivers, because I worked full time. So a volunteer driver would collect our young man from school, take him to contact. And then a family support worker would initiate the contact with birth parent. And then the volunteer driver would bring our young man home. He now has unsupervised contact, so he meets his parent after he's finished college, which when I finish work, I do go and meet. So I do, I have got a really, really good relationship with our young man's birth parent. He only sees one of his parents. So when he meets that parent at the end of the month, I, I meet them. And for Christmas, we go Christmas shopping, birthdays, we always buy birth parent presents and we take, it's, we take him shopping and he would like, he'll choose his gift and my young man will pay for it. And, and that's just a really good thing that, that we can, we really encourage that. Yeah, so I've never done, I've never done contact like Gemma has, but now it's unsupervised. I do meet the parent. And because of lockdown, obviously the face to face contact can't happen. So we have phone contact. And again, that's just done on loudspeaker and we're all talking, you know, having a cup of tea and just chatting about what's been going on. And so that's quite nice because I can get really involved in, in that conversation and rather than just saying, right, see you later and then, you know, meeting them an hour and a half later. So yeah.
So obviously, is the birth parent that he meets, there's, there's no risk from that birth parent?
No, 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 that's all assessed first. Yeah, that wouldn't have, if they thought that, you know, our young man was going to be at risk and there's no way it would have gone to unsupervised, no way, that, that wouldn't have happened at all. So yeah, that was a, that was discussed over like about six months, I think it was, before we trialled it, because you don't know unless you try, unfortunately. So we trialled it and it's been really successful.
Great, sorry.
And the meetings don't last very long, the meetings are for about an hour. You know, the, the meetings don't last very, well, in my, in my experience, the meetings don't last very long. Yeah, so the, the PEP meeting and the lacks, they're, they're not usually any more than an hour.
Great, thanks for that. Cheryl, do you want to tell us a little bit about record keeping and how you do that?
Yeah, I keep records on a daily basis of everything that's gone on in that day. Mine's a bit more detailed because I have to make notes about what the young mum has done with the, the what the young mum has done with the, the baby and whether, what she's cooked and whether she's done all his meals. And, and because she's had some mental health problems, it's noting what her mood's like that day, if there've been any dips in her mood. But, and, and also logging any bruises that he picks up through the day. So ours is quite a structured, detailed log. That picking up on the things that the social worker wants to see, that she's developing the skills in. So, you know, it will include things that she's done that have contributed towards her independence skills and things like that. So it, it is quite detailed and it goes through the day. But it doesn't take me that long to do it. And as, as somebody said earlier, you know, it, it then provides you with something to look back on. And also I've, I've been able to reflect back to the young mum on her development and say, well, look, when I look back a year ago, this is what you were like. You were, you know, you were leaving a lot of it to me because you didn't feel confident. But now you're getting up and you're, you're doing all these things. So it's really good to reinforce that with the, the young mum and give her confidence in her own abilities.
Thanks for that. Yeah, yeah, with record keeping, it's important to keep logs of everything. I know that some foster carers, the logs that they've kept have sometimes been used in court as evidence of certain things, if a child discloses something, it's really important that you write that down and that sort of thing. But you're not expected to, to write an essay. Obviously, the type of fostering Cheryl does is quite involved. So as she said, she has to keep quite detailed records and so on. But like Rachel, for instance, do you write an essay every night on, on looking after your young man or?
No, because we've had, because we've had our young man so long that I, I mean, all I log now is when his social worker comes, how contact went, any appointments that he's had. To begin with, when he first moved in, I was logging all of the, you know, his behaviours and things like that. Because he was, he was new to us and we were new to him. So he did have your behaviours, but, so I was logging those. But now I tend to, I don't need to log as much. So I log the things like if he went on a bike ride or something, you know, with, with my husband, then I'll log that he's, because that's where they've gone, they've gone on a bike ride. So I just log that, you know, you went on a bike ride today and how that went. But you, so you log the good and the bad really, you log the, you know, the, the negative things and you, you can also log the positive things. But I don't log as much as, not as mu, I log, just log the medicals, the, the appointments and things like that now. The daily diaries, I, I used to log all the time when he first came, but, but not so much now.
Great, thanks for that. Lastly, obviously, having fun. Gemma, do you want to tell us a bit about the fun that you've had with some of your kids?
Yeah, we've had lots of fun, lots of firsts, going on holiday, seeing sea, just going to the play park. It's, it's amazing. Meeting a cow for the first time. Every day's a fun day and, you know, most days I laugh, possibly cry. Yeah, it's all really good fun, but hard work. Yeah. Sometimes that's, but yeah, we've had so much fun fostering and we absolutely love it.
Brilliant, thanks for that. Okay, so moving on. The demand for foster carers in Nottingham at the moment, we've got the highest figure ever sadly, around 650 children in care. And we're, at the moment, we're relying too heavily on the private sector, the independent fostering agencies. When we don't have enough foster carers of our own, we have to go out to them, which we'll talk a little bit about later. The children are from all backgrounds, all ages. A lot of the children who are in care, there's a, there's a sort of a high proportion of children in care have additional needs than the general population. Sometimes though, they might have a diagnosis of something like ADHD. And then, but after a period of being fostered, when they get settled, when they get in port, when they feel secure, they might catch up sort of at school and that sort of thing. That diagnosis might then go away. So it's never sort of, it, it's unsurprising really, a lot of children have these diagnoses of when you look at the circumstances they've come from. Over half the children we look after are part of a sibling group. And it's really important that we try and keep siblings together. Sometimes we get sibling groups of like six, seven or eight. And no matter how big your house is, we wouldn't say, we wouldn't recommend that you look after that many children from the same sibling group. But the most common group of siblings is groups of two and three. So even if you've got just one spare bedroom in your house, if it's big enough for bunk beds or a couple of single beds, you could be looking after two brothers, two sisters and keeping them together. Very often, the only people who know the story of a fostered child is their siblings, their full life story. And to lose that, it's, it can be really damaging. So like I say, even if you've just got one spare bedroom in your house, please think about, is it big enough? Could I fit two boys or two girls in that? It's really, really important. So the practical requirements you need, you need a spare bedroom. Unfortunately, we can't start an assessment until that spare bedroom's in place. Sometimes people come to us and they are having an extension bill or they're waiting for my son or daughter to go to university or whatever happens to them. But as we know, life gets in the way. And sometimes the spare bedroom isn't available as quickly as people thought. So you must have a spare bedroom available in your home for us to be able to start that assessment. You need to be aged 21 or over. Having a support network's quite important. Fostering can take it out of you physically and mentally, can be quite draining. And it's really important that there's people around your family or friends who don't have to be physically kind of there even. But, you know, someone who are on the end of the phone who you can speak to and talk about. But having that, having those people there who can do, you know, a bit of babysitting or the school run or just helping you with, with tasks and stuff, it's really important. When you become a foster carer, you're automatically plugged into a very, very big support network of city council foster carers. We've got, getting on for 200 fostering households in and around the city. So no matter where you live in, in around the city, you're not going to be far away from another fostering household. A lot of people obviously don't go around wearing a badge saying I'm a foster carer. But when you become a foster carer, you'll suddenly meet all these people. Some people you might know already, though you weren't aware that they were foster carers. And that's a really big help, that support network of other carers. You can be from any cultural or faith background, a single, couple, from LGBT community, with your own kids, without your own kids. We just need a diverse range of carers to meet the diverse needs of the children that we've got. Moving on. So the personal qualities needed, I won't read through all of them because hopefully they're quite sort of self-evident. The one that foster carers always tell me is the most important is the bottom one, which is the sense of humour. Because there's things happen when you're fostering that if you don't laugh at, then you definitely would cry at. Also, being organised and practical is pretty important. You need to be someone who's punctual, reliable, you know, you can, you can get to the meeting on time. You can take children to school on time, that sort of thing. Being adaptable as well, being able to think on your feet, having a plan B, a plan C, a plan D, a plan E. Because in a lot of cases, the plan A won't, won't go to plan. But the rest of them, you know, being patient and kind and all these sort of things, what you'd expect from, from someone that wants to foster. So who can't foster? As I mentioned, if you don't have a spare room just now, you need to wait until your spare room's available before we're able to start an assessment. If you're not 21 yet, you need to wait until your 21st birthday. Serious criminal history will rule you out. And by that we mean any offence against a child. Any other sort of offences like domestic violence or other serious violence will rule you out as well. But a lot of people have done a lot daft things when they were younger. And that was no bearing on the sort of person they are now. Lots of people did daft things, like I say, but we look at things in context, you know. If somebody did a bit of shoplifting when they were a teenager, but now they're in their 40s or the 50s or whatever and they're not a shoplifter now, then we would say, well, that's not going to stop you from fostering. If you do have any questions about that, do just, just get in touch. Significant health conditions will rule people out. An example here is epilepsy. A lot of people can have epilepsy and it's managed with medication and it's absolutely fine. You know, they don't have any episodes, any fits or anything. You might get somebody else who's got epilepsy, they take medication for it, but they occasionally still have a fit now and then. And what we've got to think is, if we're placing a child with you to foster and, you know, you have epilepsy and you have a fit, is that child going to be safe? So we'll always try and get a medical opinion on that, usually from your GP as to whether they think, yeah, it's going to be safe for you to foster. We get a lot of foster carers who have like back conditions and stuff. And that won't rule them out. What it might do is rule you out from fostering very young children. You know, you, you wouldn't want to be fostering babies and toddlers if you've got a bad back because it involves a lot of lifting, a lot of crawling around, that sort of thing. Mobility is quite important, depending if you're looking after sort of old children. Like if you're walking along Parliament Street and you've got a young person with you and they see something on the other side of Parliament Street, they want to go and look at without saying, let's cross the road and then they just sort of make a dash for it. You need to be able to be, able to grab them before they go under a bus basically, literally. Or also if you're in a civic centre and you're walking around and the child wants to play hide and seek in John Lewis and runs off, you need to be able to run after them and fetch them before you've got a missing child scenario. But it's rare that health things rule people out. If you do have any sort of question, again, just speak to us and, and usually we'll put your mind at rest. Lastly, people who don't like children and young people, they can't foster. It's a bit of joke, but it's, it's sort of illustrates the point that sometimes we get couples come to us where one of the couple really wants to foster and the other couple, the other person in the couple doesn't really want to foster, but they're just kind of going along with it to keep their partner happy. Everyone in the house has to be 100% behind fostering. Including any children you've got living at home. It's really important that everyone's on board. Otherwise, it, it won't work. We come to fostering placements and matching. When you're approved as a carer, you'll get put on the list obviously as having a vacancy. And the placements team, when they get a referral in saying, this child needs to be placed with a foster carer, we always try and get the best match first time. There's a lot of things that go into that. So it could be the age, the area of the city they live in, cultural background, pets, any other kids in the home, that sort of thing. We always try and get as close a match as we possibly can. So for example, if somebody who's fostering and their preference is teenagers and we've got a baby to place, we wouldn't necessarily think that would be a good match because the preference of that foster carer is for much older children. Sometimes we'll ask just on the off chance and sometimes the carer will take the child. But usually the age is, is something that we consider first and we wouldn't go too far out with preference range. The area of the city, sometimes we want to place children quite a distance away from home for whatever reason. But in most instances, we place kids generally on the same side of the city. Pets is one that's quite important. A lot of kids find pets really therapeutic. Some kids are absolutely frightened to death of pets. So that's again, an important consideration. Others in the home, so for example, some children love being part of a busy household with lots of kids in. Some children need to be the only child in that home because they, they need the attention of just being the only child in there. We share everything we know with, with you about the child. So whether it's positive or negative, everything we know will, will tell you. We don't want to sort of tell you half the things so that you'll say, yeah, that sounds like a good match for our family. And then later on down the line, things happen or come out and it's kind of, well, why didn't you tell me? Because, you know, the, the placement won't, won't stick if, if we don't tell you everything and so you can make a fully informed decision. You're never forced to take a child. We will do our best to say, look, we think this is a good match, have a think about it. If you don't think it's a good match, that's fine. We'll just move to the next vacancy on the list. We won't hold it against you. Gemma, could you, could you tell us a bit about the sort of matches that you were approached with when, when you were approved?
Yeah, so we were, actually even at panel, there were a few children that they thought would be a good match. But after looking and reading the referrals and talking it through with your supporting social worker, which is really important, we decided they weren't. And so quite a few children we actually said no to initially, which, which felt awful. But actually for our family was really important. We've got birth kids at home. Yeah, so a complex family unit already, it needs to be a really good match. And I think the longer that you foster, you realise what works best for your family and your setup. So yeah, we, you know, sadly said no, but for us it was right. And the children that actually landed at one o'clock in the morning were actually the perfect match for us initially. And the others that we have placed as well have all worked really well so far. We've been really lucky with the matching.
Thanks for that. Rachel, do you want to talk about what the times when you've been approached in the past with, with a match and how you've kind of thought about that and talked it through with your husband and that sort of thing?
Yeah, sure. So when, before we got our young man, we had two referrals come through. One was, one was for him and one was for another child. But when we read the forms, we felt like we could offer more to the young man we have now rather than to the other young man, which like Gemma said, if, if it's like 50/50, you know, because we, we only had one bedroom, one spare bedroom. So it was heads or tails who did, and it, it really felt awful. But when, like Gemma, we spoke to our supervisor and social worker and, and it was decided, we all decided that actually we need to offer a home to the young man that we have. You know, he really needed to come and live with us. And he really is the best match. He's, he just kind of fitted straight in. And so we don't say he was placed with us, we say he joined our family because that's what he's done. You know, he's, he's joined our family. I, you know, I tell everyone I've got three boys. I've got two birth children and our foster son, but I don't say, I just say I've got three boys because he is one of, he's one of our clan, he's one of, he's one of us if you like. But the, the referrals are, like you, you're spot on, John, you can only tell us what you know. So when you say you tell us everything, you're telling us what you know about that child. And some things come out, if you like, later on. And we say, well, why didn't, why didn't we know about this? Well, because you didn't know about this. So you can only tell us what you know. But again, the, the support that you get from your social worker is huge. So when things do crop up that nobody knew about, the support is there for you to work through it. You're not left on your own, you're never ever left on your own just to deal with it. The support that you get from your social worker and, and the child's social worker, it is valid. Like you really need that and it is there.
Brilliant, thanks for that. So why foster for Nottingham City Council? Oh, just move this over so it's visible. As I mentioned earlier, we don't have enough of our own foster carers at the moment. We're getting lots more, but we could do with lots more, which is why we're holding this event. We always try and place children with our own foster carers first. The reason for that is that we know our foster carers. We've trained them, we've assessed them, we supervise them, we know their strengths and weaknesses, we know about matching criteria and so on. If we don't have any beds available and we have to go out to the, the private sector, we effectively get like a CV of a fostering family that, or fostering families that agencies will, will say, yeah, we think these, these people will be good for looking after these children. And often we sort of, we, we just go on what we've got on paper, but there's nothing like, like I say, knowing our own carers and who'd be a good match and so on. Also, our carers are all placed in and around the city. So in terms of like doing school runs and that sort of thing, it's a lot easier, you know, the child's local. Whereas sometimes when we place children with agency foster carers, they could be in Derby or Leicester or Sheffield or Birmingham or Doncaster or somewhere like that. And that's a huge change for the children to, to get, to go to a completely different area and have a really long school run in the morning. You're talking sometimes like an hour, an hour and a half before they even get to school and then an hour, an hour and a half drive when they come back. The outcomes for kids are nearly always better when they're placed fairly close to birth family, where that's appropriate. Also, there's the cost taken into account. When we have to place children with agency foster carers, it costs us about three times as much because the fostering agencies, businesses, they, they need to turn a profit. So they charge us as, as much as they can usually to place children with them. Couple of years ago, we played, we spent over £12 million on placing children with agency foster carers. And we worked out if we'd had enough of our own foster carers that year and we could have placed all the children with our own foster carers, it would have only cost us about seven or eight million. So you're talking, you know, four, five million pounds coming out of the budget straight away out of the children's budget. And that's money that could be spent on intervention work, you know, support workers, children's centres, that sort of thing, to stop children coming into care in the first place. So it's really important we get more of our own foster carers so that we can reinvest that money into stopping children coming into care in the first place. So we always want to place children by their own foster carers first. So if you, if you come in Nottingham City Council Foster Carer, you won't wait long between placements. When you foster with a fostering agency, you can be waiting months or even even a year or more between getting offered placements from from councils. There's strong links between the children's social worker and the carers, the foster carer's social worker. So Miriam will know a lot of the children's social workers already. We all follow the same policies and procedures. Sometimes agency social workers have a different idea on how things should be done. And you get a bit of tension there between the foster carer's social worker from the agency and then the children's social worker. And the child's in the middle of that and nobody wants that really. Whereas, like I say, with Nottingham City, if you foster for us, we all follow the same policies. The support was being mentioned earlier, it was there. You've got your own fostering social worker, someone like Miriam. If she's not available, then during office hours, there's the duty team there and a 24/7 phone line that's available. And they've got that staffed by somebody who's got access to all your records, all the children's records, a list of all the policies and procedures for any sort of scenario. So if you have to ring up at like one in the morning saying, this has happened, what do I do? They can advise you what course of action to take. You get paid respite for us as well. So two weeks of the year, you can have have a couple of weeks break from fostering. A lot of people now have sort of other caring responsibilities, like elderly relatives or whatever, where they might want to spend a week with them, looking after them, that sort of thing. We don't encourage people to go on holiday without the foster child. We want the foster child to fit into a family and become part of that family. So if you go away on holiday, if you've got children of your own particularly, we don't want people to put a child into respite while you go off and and have a holiday and then come back and tell the child what a wonderful time you've had while they've not been with you. We really don't want that at all. But the respite's there for when it's needed. We've got local carer support groups in different areas of the city. Some of them are quite big, some of them are just little informal groups where carers meet up for coffee, that sort of thing. We have body carers and that is experienced carers. Gemma, you're a body carer, aren't you?
Yeah, yeah, just on the other end of the phone really, for people to give me a ring and to to ask questions. That's good. We all need each other really. Work as a big team.
Yeah, so so when somebody's coming through the assessment, if you're available to buddy with them, we'll sort of contact you and say, we've got this this household coming through assessment and we think you'd be a good buddy for them, either because you live close by or you've got like similar interests or that kind of thing. So we'd approach it. And then how does it work from from your point of view?
I will initially get in touch with the new carers and just have a chat and give them my number. I mean, some people don't need you at all. Some people are on the phone lots and lots. We're all really different and it's just offering that ear really to listen and to guide them. And then if, you know, sometimes it's something that you can't help with, then you might be able to contact a social worker and say, you know, so and so's really worried about this, can you help them? So, yeah, it's good. I've made lots of friends that way too. So you get to know new carers coming through. Been good. We help each other.
Brilliant. Thanks for that. There's a newsletter that comes out that keeps you informed about what's going on in the service and in the wider world of fostering. We have family days as well. These are really, really nice. We obviously have like events at Christmas and stuff like that. And then like sort of picnics and Waltham Park, those type of things. And then celebration events. Cheryl, do you want to tell us a little bit about the celebration event, the Big It Up events and how they work?
Yeah, it's it's really good. We have the, we have two, one for older children and one for younger children. And we also have an evening for care leavers. So it's to celebrate any and it can be quite small achievements, like managing to go to school every day. And it's really nice because the the families all come out together and we're able to give children certificates and a really lovely evening. And they really appreciate it. And it's a chance to get to know those families as well and to see the children just all happy and and really pleased to get an award. And some children come and they they're really worried about going up on the stage to collect the award and they can have somebody go up with them. But it's really nice to be able to celebrate the achievements the children make because that's what it's all about. It's about enabling these children to to reach their potential and to to really give them a good start in life because they've not always had the best start. So it's to try and pull, put those building blocks back in place and to enable them to to grow up and into well-adjusted young adults. And it's really nice to see them develop.
Thanks for that. We've also got therapeutic support team in-house. The it's sometimes referred to as CAMHS, you might hear it that, that's the Children and Adolescent Mental Health Services. Rachel, did you did you need to access CAMHS at all with with your young man?
Yeah, when he when he come to live with us, when he when he joined our family, he was already under CAMHS. So that's just a service that we continued with. But there's a really good course that they did, an attachment course that my husband and I both attended. It was 11 weeks and it was done every Monday for 11 weeks. And it just taught you. It kind of made me realise that that his behaviour's meant something, that it wasn't just a behaviour. He was trying to tell us something but didn't know how to tell us. So when, once we realised what attachment actually meant, then we changed the whole way that we was parenting him. And it made a big difference. So CAMHS was useful for us then. We don't use the service now, we've not used the service for a few years, but when we did need it, it was it was useful.
Thanks for that. Yeah, we're really lucky because we've got that team in-house. Some local authorities have to refer out to services and you can be on a waiting list for months sometimes before you can get help. Whereas, like I say, our CAMHS team is, can get to work straight away. Ongoing training and development, before you get approved as a carer, you need to do the the sort of pre-approval training called Skills to Foster. And that gives you like the basics of what you need to know when you get started fostering. But obviously, you learn as you go. And there's a massive range of subjects around fostering that we provide training for, ranging from things like autism, attachment disorder, managing behaviours, record keeping, huge, huge list of of training and stuff that, you know, you can you can go on. We always encourage foster carers to go on as many courses as they can that we provide. And in some cases, we can get training in if if there's a sort of specialist area or something like that that you're interested in and it's relevant to the children that you're looking after, then we can buy courses in if there's enough demand for it. So it's you're just constantly learning. I mean, we've got foster carers who are in the 70s who've been fostering for 30, 40 years sometimes. And they will say, yeah, you're learning something new every day. Every new child we look after, you learn something for. And things evolve as well. You know, 10 years ago, we weren't having to run the Face It Up to Facebook course because Facebook and other social media things weren't something that kids were getting groomed through. But now, obviously, it's a massive thing. It's something that evolves and we need to keep updated. Just have a quick drink. We also pay quite generous financial allowances for a local authority. We'd love to pay our foster carers loads more, but we pay them what we're able to, we pay them what we can afford. You might see some adverts from the independent fostering agencies, the private agencies with like, you might say, oh, you get paid £400 a week, something like that, if you foster with us. We don't pay £400 a week on average. So people sometimes look at that and think, oh, well, I'm going to get paid more for doing the same thing, so I'll go with an agency. What they don't tell you is that that £400 you're expected to pay for everything out of that £400 or whatever, however much it is a week. So if you're doing a lot of mileage and if you, you know, you're looking after a child from another city, like I say, we often have to place kids in Derby or Leicester or Sheffield or wherever, if they're doing a lot of school runs every day, that adds up. We pay £45 per mile for any journey that is related to fostering. Gemma, do you want to tell us a bit about the sort of mileage you were doing at one point?
Yeah, so initially when children came into our care, they were having contact very regularly, three times a week in the centre of Nottingham. So we're around 10 miles away. So we were doing sort of 60 miles a week for contact alone without all the other bits on top. So, yeah, it soon adds up and it really helps, you know, keep your car on the road really. So, yeah, it was, it's amazing how many miles you do do.
Yeah, so any journey, like, you know, a school run or a trip to contact or a trip to the doctors or that kind of thing is, we cover it. We don't want any foster carers to be out of pocket. We sometimes get foster carers transfer over, you know, they've started fostering with an agency and they've ended up transferring over to us. And they end up actually better off with us because they know they've got that guaranteed allowance every week. And then anything extra that we reimburse on top. So other expenses like if you need to buy furniture or, you know, a car seat, buggy, all these, all these sort of one-off things, we pay for. Whereas when you foster with an agency, you don't get that extra, you know, it's kind of, you get your weekly allowance, your £400 or whatever it happens to be, and you're expected to pay for everything out of that. So don't, you know, if you're looking at us and other agencies and or other authorities or whatever, do sort of take all that into consideration because it does add up. You also become part of the fostering network when you foster with us. They're a charity that look after foster carers and fostering services. Really good charity. There's loads of benefits to to being with them. The main thing is the the discounts you get, the tie-ins they've got with big financial services companies for like mortgages, insurances or family days out and that sort of thing. But there's, there's a lot of benefits to being with the fostering network as well. So how do you become a foster carer? The first thing to do is after tonight, log on. I'll just flick the screen forward and just show you again, just a reminder. If you go to the website, fosteringnottingham.com, go to the Get In Touch page. And then on there, you'll see the box to book a virtual home visit. Tick that, give us the resty details and then one of us will get in touch with you and arrange to do a home visit. Ordinarily, we would actually physically come to your home. Obviously, we can't do that at the moment, so we're doing virtual home visits where, like, like now with with Zoom or whatever it is, we'll sort of meet up over Zoom. You can give us a bit of a tour of your house, make it, make sure it's suitable. We'll get to know a bit more about you, ask you lots and lots of questions about fostering and what you know about fostering and and how, you know, it would fit into your life and everything like that. And then if we're happy and we think, yeah, you're a good prospect for being a good fostering household and you're happy to proceed, at that point, you can do the application form, submit that and then start the assessment. The assessment's in two stages, one and two. Stage one lasts about eight weeks normally. And that's where we will get lots and lots of information from you through the forms and go away and double check all of that. It's really important that everyone that we put forward to foster, we know everything about. We don't want anyone dodgy fostering our children. So we will do lots and lots of background checks. Obviously, DBS is the main one, but we'll also speak to your employer. If you've got kids at school, we'll speak to the school. Just to make sure, you know, they don't think there's any reason why that you shouldn't foster, you know, or if it would have any effect on your children. Sometimes people come forward to foster. We speak to the children's school and sometimes the school will say, well, actually, it would be better if they waited until we'd done the GCSEs or waited until they'd gone to secondary school or whatever. So we just would pause that assessment until that's out of the way with. If you've lived outside the UK after the age of 18, we'll do an overseas check as well. Ex-partners, that's something that's really important. Sometimes people get a bit alarmed, but why would you need to speak to an ex-partner? By ex-partner, we mean anybody you've had children with, anyone you've lived with, anyone you've been married to. And the reason we need to do that is because sadly, a few years ago, in another part of the country, a foster carer killed a child that they were looking after. And there was a serious case review done. When the outcome of that serious case review came out, it was basic, somebody had come forward and said, well, an ex-partner of the foster carer said, if you'd spoken to me first, I could have told you this, this and this about their violent nature. And, you know, that person would never become the foster carer. So the serious case review said, anybody that wants to foster, we have to explore their past, including significant ex-partners, just to make sure there's nothing in the background that's going to, you know, indicate any violent tendencies and that sort of thing. If you've got an ex-partner and that relationship had domestic violence in it, then we won't approach that ex-partner. That's not a can of worms that we want to open. So what we do is generally what we call like third-party reference. So if somebody knows you who knew you through that relationship, knew what that relationship was like, can verify, you know, yeah, there was domestic violence, that sort of thing, then that that's good enough for us. We, like I say, we don't want to open any cans of worms. We don't want to rake stuff up from the past with with people that you don't want to let know that you're fostering and that sort of thing. So again, if you've got any worries about that, please, please just speak to us. So like I say, we gather lots of information about people, make sure that everything that you tell us is true. One thing that is really important is that you're honest. Obviously, everybody's got a past. Lots of people have ex-partners and that sort of thing. Or they might have, you might have an offence from when you were younger, all that sort of thing. Please tell us everything, be honest. We can work with honesty. But what we can't work with is dishonesty. If there's anything that you tell us on the application form or with with interviewing, that sort of thing, that later found out isn't true, then that's end of assessment. We can't have anybody who's dishonest fostering for us. It's as simple as I, we're placing the most vulnerable children in the city with strangers. So we need to make sure those strangers to those children are absolutely 100%, you know, 100%. We can't take any chances. So if you don't conceal anything, just be upfront, be honest, and we can work with you. Like I say, any dishonesty, any concealing of anything, that's it, it's end of assessment. So the stage one, we go away, gather all that information, do all those checks, make sure everything is is spot on and above board. Once all that information's come back, then we start stage two. And that's where you get a visit once a week from your assessing social worker. Sometimes we'll do two or three visits during stage one just to get to know you, just to sort of corroborate the references and that sort of thing. But stage two, it's usually we'll visit like once a week, something like that. During the current lockdown period, that's done virtually as well now. And it's some, in a lot of cases, we're able to do it a lot quicker because the social workers aren't having to travel and that sort of thing. They've got more time to to actually do the visits and that sort of thing. But usually it's it's once a week and they will get to know everything about you and everyone in your household to basically get a life story so that they've got a case study to take to fostering panels, say, you know, this is everybody in this household, this is their support network, this is their attitudes, this is, you know, why we think they're going to make a good fostering household. And it gets a bit personal, you know, we need to know everything about you. Gemma, do you want to tell us a bit about your assessment and sort of detail that you need to go into and that sort of thing?
Yeah, so we were assessed probably over about 12 weeks. Emily, our social worker, she came to our house once a week, some weeks she came twice a week. We looked forward to seeing her. It was a little bit therapeutic really. We went through lots of life history. She met all our birth kids. She assessed the dog, the bearded dragon, the hamster. Pretty much everything that lives with us was assessed. So it was all good fun. But, yeah, it's a little bit intrusive at times and you think, well, why, why do you need to know that? But actually, when you see that form at the end and and read it, you realise it's just such a good picture and a story of your family and why you'd be really great at fostering. And the panel get to see that. So, yeah, it was a little bit intrusive, a little bit therapeutic, good fun and hard work. There was lots of of work to do on sort of family trees and things like that. But we thoroughly enjoyed it.
Thanks for that. So, yeah, the assessing social worker build-up, it's called a Form F, the case study, which is, you know, that thick, everything about you. That'll go to fostering panel. Fostering panel's made up of a number of different individuals who've got an interest in fostering. So you'll have somebody who's been fostered, a current foster carer, you'll have legal representation, medical representation, social workers and other people who have an interest in making sure that whoever we put forward to become a foster carer, they they think is good enough. They run independently from the council. They need to be independent because they have to scrutinise everything independently. They want us to have lots of good foster carers, but they want them to be spot on. So they will look at the the Form F and the references and everything like that, just to make sure, yeah, whoever we're putting forward is is good. Cheryl, do you want to tell us a little bit about your experience of panel and what that's like?
Yeah, I was really nervous about going to panel, but it, you know, it turned out I didn't need to be nervous at all. They, we just sat and chatted to them. It was a really good experience. And you go to panel again after 12 months. Um, uh, and you go to panel again after 12 months. And so we've done both that first panel meeting and the second. Uh, and it it was, it was really nice, variety of people, uh, including some questions that are put by foster children themselves. So, um, the panel have got all the information about you beforehand, they've read through it. And so they're there to ask any specific questions that they've got about you, uh, and to just explore. Uh, you know, whether you'll be a, you know, a a good foster foster carer. And um, yeah, it wa- it wa- it was really nice. There, I think there's a foster carer on the panel as well, but but there's a variety of people on the panel, including councillors and people with an interest in uh in in fostering.
Great. So a lot, a lot, like a lot of people say to me, oh, I'm really nervous about going to panel, but pretty much every foster carer you speak to will say, I was really nervous. It was nowhere near as intimidating as I thought it would be. It was like totally, it's something that seems to get built up to be this, or it's like the worst job interview you're ever going to have in your life. But in the reality, it's it's nothing like that. Right. Um, and then what, when when fostering panel make the recommendation, um, that will go to what somebody here called the agency decision maker, um, who basically just rubber stamps that application, just say, yeah, now you're a foster carer for Nottingham City Council, and that's when you'll start getting approached for matches. Um, I mean, Gemma, you said that, um, even, you know, before you went to panel, we'd identified children that we thought would be a good match for you. Um, we we try and do that.
At panel, our supervising social worker had a little blue bag with a few referrals in as well. So, um, yeah, you never quite know.
But yeah, we we try and where we can, try and like twin-track matching children with with families who are coming through to foster. Um, so that we can get matched and placed as quickly as possible. Um, sometimes it 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 doesn't work, some, a lot of times it does. Um, you know, where a couple of weeks before panel, we can say, okay, well, this fostering family coming through, they'd be really good at looking after these type of children. And the placement team say, well, we've got children here that really need looking after by this sort of family. Um, we do some early matching. Obviously, it's all confidential until the family's approved, but where where we can, we'll do that so we can place the children straight away because the number of children coming into care is going up all the time. Um, and we need as many children placed with our own foster carers as as we possibly can. Um, so the next step, like I say, um, if you go to fosteringnotting.com, um, go to the get in touch page, book a virtual visit. Um, and yeah, we'll we'll get in touch. Um, so questions, let me just have a look at the inbox and see what questions have come through. Uh, first one, uh, this is quite a common one. Um, how do you, I'm frightened of um getting too attached to a child. Um, how do, well, Gemma, do you want to answer that one? Because I know that you've moved children on about getting getting attached to to attach to a child. How do you sort of not do that, if you know what I mean? How does, how does that work when when you're looking?
Don't not do that. Um, as a human being, it's not possible. You attach to a child and I think, you know, if you don't attach to a child that lives with your family and becomes part of your family, then it's possibly not working. Um, so no, it's okay to become attached and it's okay to grieve when they leave. Um, and I've returned a baby to a birth mum, um, which was really, really rewarding, but also really sad as siblings were left with us. Um, so yeah, it it's part of what we do. Um, and attaching to a child is really healthy and it helps that child to move on. Um, and to heal them and and to help them move on to a new family or back to birth parents. And if they have a secure attachment, they very often can move that attachment on to another carer. So, um, it's okay to become attached, but it's hard. Um, but you just have to look after yourself. Use your social worker, get on the phone, use your friend, um, and each other, you know, ring, ring another carer and ask for support. That's what we're here for.
Thanks for that. Um, so look, um, there's one here about taking children on holidays, um, going abroad on holidays. Um, Miriam, um, what's the situation? Um, do you want to answer the the procedures around that?
Um, yeah, I think most of the times it it all depends whether the child um has got a passport. Um, and we often need to know the details of of where the holiday is and sort of where they're going to stay, the sleeping arrangements. Um, it's, it's normally fine, a lot of foster carers take children abroad, but we just need to know a few details beforehand. And and also, um, it does depend a bit, their passports, in situations, passports for children have not been done, um, sort of straight away after they moved into placement. So I would always invite foster carers, if they, if they know they want to go abroad, to speak to the social worker, to say, we we're planning to go abroad. Um, can we make sure that we have got a passport for this child? Um, and then provide the details to the child's social worker. Um, but yeah, a lot of foster carers do do that in my experience anyway.
Get a letter as well, Gemma. You get given a letter to say that you could, because you need to have the parent's permission to take the children abroad. So sometimes the the parent might not want you to take, but the social worker sorts that out. Don't worry, you do get to take the child abroad. But you do get, um, you get given a letter because obviously you get to the airport and you've got a different surname to the child. So, um, the social gives you a letter just to say that you have got permission to take this child, that you are the care for that child and you have got permission to take the child out of the country. But any, any problems or the the passport is paid for by the Nottingham City. Um, and um, it's usually, it is a good idea that if when your child comes into placement, just get the passport done anyway, even if you're not planning on going abroad, just ask them, just do your passport anyway. Because you never know, you might, you know, and the passports last for five years, um, you know, under the age of sixteen. So they, um, you could just get a passport anyway, just get one. It's always, it's always good, um, ID anyway for the child. So it's just, just ask for one as soon as you get placed with the child. But, um, yeah, any, any niggly bits, you know, the the social worker, they they sort them out for you. You don't have to worry about any of you know, if the parent doesn't agree with anything, you don't have to worry about any of that. The social worker sorts all that.
Brilliant. Thanks for that. Um, got another question here. Um, can you adopt a child that has been placed with you? Um, Miriam, are you okay to answer that one as well from the social worker point of view?
Yeah, yeah, that's fine. Um, uh, it depends. Um, every child has got a care plan. There's a plan that's being done by the child's social worker for every single child. And that plan, whether that child is going to adoption or not, it's decided by the child's social worker who has got responsibility for that child. Um, so if the, if the plan for the child is to go to adoption, um, then you have to be, if you're a foster carer who wants to adopt that child, you have to be assessed as an adopter to be able to adopt the child. It's possible and it happens. Uh, but it needs to be done as a decision jointly with your own social worker, the child's social worker. Um, and uh probably there'll be a meeting about it, to talk about it, all the implications. Um, and the ins and outs and the process and what that, what that, what that entails. Um, but it it is possible, yes.
Great. Thank you for that. So it's not something that's like really common, that's just really straightforward and stuff. It, it, obviously, it's always done from the the interests of, the best interests of the child.
That's right.
A lot of things like that are taken into consideration. Great, thanks for that. Uh, we've got another question here. Um, I'm worried that a messy divorce will stop my chances. Um, now, I don't think that would stop anybody from fostering. Um, I know we've got lots of foster carers who've had divorces. Um, and, you know, some of them are being straightforward, some of them have been messy, but um, I can't see that being a problem. Um, yeah, again, Miriam, come back to you from the social work point of view. Um, a lot of the foster carers you've got.
Yeah, I think it depends about, I think every case is looked at individually. Um, so there'll be questions asked about that. Um, but like John was saying, it's normally not an issue, but it does, it does vary depending on the details that every, every single assessment, every foster care household is different. So depending on the details in that divorce, that that will be considered. But in my experience personally, um, it's not really been an issue, no.
Okay, um, I'll just go back to the screen again and then I'll just check the inbox again. Um, there's one here about taking children to church with you. Um, so basically, um, if you're looking after children who perhaps aren't same religion as you, um, what to do with that? Um, again, can I come back to you for that, Miriam? So if somebody's um looking after a child who's perhaps not a Christian, um, who, and and the foster carers of church goes, um, you know, how how's, how does that work? Because I know that's a common thing.
Yeah, that's very common, very, very common. And, um, I'm supporting foster carers of 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 a variety of religions and we try to match. A lot of the times we try to to put, um, part of the matching criteria is it's having a same culture and religion. It's not always possible. Um, and I I'm supporting foster carers at the minute who are churchgoers and are Christian, but they've got Muslim children um in placement. So what we always have to be careful is that we respect that child's wishes and feelings all the time. Um, depending on the age of the child, obviously, if they're able to express that, uh, but we need to be always of what they want to do. And you you will also know their background. The form that, when the child is placed, the forms that you you're given shows what their child's background is and what their religion is and whether they follow that or not. Um, and it's, it's, it's always important to check with the child if they do want to go to church. Um, if they follow the religion or if they don't, or if they're happy to go to church, or if they want to continue in a different religion. And it's important to respect uh what the child wants to do. Um, so we would never force a child to go to church or to go to the mosque. But if the child wants to go, we need to be respectful of that and support them in in following what they have been used to and what they want to follow.
Great, thanks for that.
That's where your support network works, John. So if you do go to church, but you have a child living with you that doesn't, that's where you need your support network. So possibly the child could go and stay for the hour or however long the church service is while you go to church and then you you collect the child afterwards. So that's where your support network is really, really important.
Great, thanks for that. Um, I think that's it in in terms of of questions. Um, like I say, the the next step um is to um book a virtual visit with us or if you if you've um got any questions, any further questions or whatever, um, you can use that contact form for us. Um, I've just had another one come in to the inbox. Um, uh, do you have to get permission for day trips uh for safeguarding reasons? Um, again, I'll come, I'll come back to you, Miriam, as a as a social worker for the answer on that.
Is that a day, I wonder if that's a day trip as a family or is that a day trip for school?
Uh, it just says, do you have to get permission for day trips, um, as in safeguarding reasons? I'm assuming, well, if you say it's for both, so if if it's like a school trip or it's like a trip to like Skegness or somewhere for the day.
Um, yeah, it it depends, it depends on the child. Um, we we're normally notified. Um, if a child goes on a trip, a day trip. Um, if it's a school trip, then the school will notify us when they do go on a day trip. Safeguarding issue depends, yeah, well, yeah, it depends on every child really. So if if the child who might um displays some behaviours that could become a safeguarding issue, then there may be a need to be an assessment or what we call assessment to look at any safeguarding issues potentially. Um, but as a common practice, I I don't, no, we don't, we don't normally have to have permission really unless there's a, there's a safeguarding matter when the child displays behaviours that are um challenging and they need to be monitored or additional support or additional monitoring or additional staff may need to be in place. Um, I would say that's quite a complex situation.
I guess a lot of it's like common sense. Like if you're going to take a child, say, like abseiling or something like that, um, you'd you'd hope that, you know what I mean, it would be cases, well, this child's going to be fine, abseiling, but you might get a sibling perhaps might not be. Um, so they might want to seek advice there.
Yeah.
I think it's important to also record things like day trips in your logs. Um, so that, you know, we know where the children have been. So yeah, I always record wherever we've been in our logs.
Great. Um, that, that, I think that's all the questions we've got. Um, I'll just finish on, um, sort of getting the foster carer's perspective on on this. Um, Cheryl, can I ask you, um, what advice you would give to somebody who's thinking of fostering now?
Um, I think if you've thought about it well and you've thought about all the implications, then, you know, it doesn't commit you at this stage. If you book an initial visit, you find out more about it and you see whether it's a right fit for you and your family. It's got to be right for you. Um, and if it's right for you, then it's more likely to be right for the children. So I think it's very rewarding. Um, I think it 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 gives you a great deal of pleasure to see children develop. I've got, um, a young woman, well, she's in her mid-forties now actually, that I fostered when she was fourteen. Um, and, you know, it's over thirty years ago. And she's now told me things that, she's a teacher in Newcastle. And she's told me things that she's said to the children in her class that she's shared with them. Um, and that she's shared with her friends. And it's given me a glimpse into what her feelings were when she came to us. So it it's really rewarding to hear some of that and to see somebody grow up because some, some of these foster children do become part of your family for life. And we'll always be in touch with her. She comes down to stay with us, we go up to see her. And I'm sure that the the baby that we've got, who's now nineteen months, he'll always be a part of our life because he's, you know, we're all he's known for the last nineteen months. And so we can't just walk out of his lives when it, what his life when we, he gets rehoused, he'll be part of our lives, um, you know, and he'll come back to visit us always. Um, so I think, um, it it is something that you feel anxious about, you're not sure whether you're doing the right thing and and it's, it's so new and so different. But I think, um, if you take that initial step and find out more about it and find out more about it and talk to other foster carers, um, you you will see how how rewarding it can be and how it it'll enrich your lives really.
Great, thanks for that. Um, would you have anything to add to that, Rachel, in terms of, you know, if somebody who's who's watching this now, what would, what would you say to them?
Yeah, I'd say make sure that all your family are on board. It's okay you wanting to foster, but the whole of your house needs to want to foster. I wanted to foster for years, but my husband just said, no, we 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 can't do it, we can't do it. So I was ready and he wasn't. And it, I didn't have to convince him, but I just had to say, I really want to do this. But it took a few years before he said, come on then, let's go and do it. But so we did, you know, we went to the welcome evening, the information evening, just like what's happening now. Um, and then we had our initial visit, but each stage I was saying, are you sure? Are you sure? And he was, he really, by the end of the initial visit, he said, let's book it, let's do it, let's do it. So it took a few years, but I needed everybody in the house to be on board. It couldn't just be something I wanted to do, everyone needed to do it. Um, would we do it again? Absolutely, absolutely. Our young person, he could, um, for for whatever reason, we just want to give all our time to him. But he knows that we will foster more children. It's just that for now, he just needs all our attention and that that's okay because he's got it and that's fine. But he does know that we will foster more children. But again, it will be when he's ready. So he's a priority now of when we have more children. Um, but we will absolutely do it again. It's the best decision that we made. Um, I wish that we could have done it a long time ago, but it wasn't right for everybody. It was right for me, but not right for everybody. But we would absolutely do it again, absolutely.
Brilliant, thanks for that. Uh, Gemma, do you, do you have any advice to add?
No, I I think that's really good advice and really important that everybody wants to do it. Um, it's one, one of the best things we've ever done. We absolutely love the children that we care for. Um, it's really hard work. It's exhausting, lots of sleepless nights if you have babies. Um, hence the bags under my eyes. Um, but yeah, it it it's fantastic. It definitely has its ups and downs and you need the support. And it's really important that you speak to people. Um, and then help each other out really. Um, so yeah, have a go. Um, you know, do that initial. Um, and then help each other out really. Um, so yeah, have a go. Um, you know, do that initial bit.
Nottingham City Council, the support is there. You're never on your own. You, you've got, um, the buddy system, you've got, um, just foster cares that you just make friends with from the business meetings, you exchange numbers. Um, we've even got our own little private Facebook group. Um, it, the support is, is immense. It, you, you're never ever on your own. If you, if you've got a child that's living with you and you feel like you're struggling or there's something that you're not quite doing, you need help, that help is there. It really, really is there.
Brilliant. Thanks for that. Um, we've not had any more questions come in. Um, so just wanna thank all of you for, for taking part. Obviously everybody that's watching, um, thanks for, thanks for watching. Please get in touch. Um, like I say, I'll show you one last time. Um, a bit on the, on the website to fill in to, to book the visit. Um, if you've got any other questions before you wanna do that, um, the phone number's there. Um, that's, just give us a ring. Um, that's eight thirty till five, Monday to Friday, um, or, or send us an email. Um, we respond straight away. Um, give you as much information as you need. Um, so yeah, just, um, get in touch. Again, thank you. Uh, Gemma, Miriam, Rachel, Cheryl for taking part. Really appreciate it. Um, yeah, just go for it, I would say. Um, you're not committed to anything at this stage. Uh, it's not like we're selling you double glazing or anything where, um, we're gonna have to force you to sign on the dotted line. Just, just find out more. Uh, book a visit and we'll find out a bit more about you and, and hopefully we can get you started in, in the fostering process. So again, thanks everybody. Um, thanks for watching. Um, thanks for participating. Um, and please do get in touch and we'll go from there. Thank you very much.
Thank you, John.
Cheers. Good night.
Thanks everyone.
Bye.